I would like to call the December 17th meeting of the Carver Select Board back to order. The time is now six o'clock. This meeting is being recorded by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 9. We'll be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. Draw your mind please standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ryan, you can at least lead the community prayer.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your Spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goal of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. Especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. All right. First item on the agenda, citizens' participation. Would anyone like to come up to the mic and address the board? Please come up and state your name and address.
Good evening, everybody. It's Donna. We're in 278 South Meadow Village. I'm here to talk to the selectmen tonight in the town of Carver about the MBTA 3A zoning. I personally do not think this is a good fit for our community. And I'm really upset about our town planner naming an actual resident community village as one of the sites, and that would be Pine Tree Village. He actually stated that in his plans. That's kind of very rude and very upsetting, and not even to talk to those residents. And they're finding out on social media about this, first of all. And then, second of all, our sportsman's club is next, and then our Catholic church. These are all important items in our community that are used for outreach residences, and it's very important that these topics are addressed as a community. First of all, back in January of '23, when Edoville had come before us, we had Chief of Police Mike Ryan, Chief of EMS, and our fire department here. And I have the minutes from that meeting. And all three of them said the impact of apartments in our community is not good for our infrastructure. It would be costly, there would be safety issues, and we would need more personnel, more apparatus, and more training, obviously, on all those new items that we'd have to bring into this town. Second of all, as far as the MBTA 3A zoning, there's no guaranteed grants. They list grants, and I was just approached tonight, that in the past, we only received one of those grants, and it was about seven years ago, I believe. I don't have the information in front of me. So those grants are not guaranteed. So that's kind of like a threat, and I don't appreciate that being put out to us as if it's a threat. And before all of the selectmen had been informed about the 40B before, and it wasn't a unanimous vote for the 40B. We had one selectman say that it was the law, and I have that documentation here. But it doesn't mean that just because it's a law that we have to approve that zoning bylaw. And I would ask the town selectmen to not support this whatsoever. It's going to be costly. What about, I didn't even mention the school department. Like, what is this going to do to our school department? I mean, we're at the busting at the seams right now in the schools, and it's not good. And I would appreciate it if the selectmen going forward would not support the 40B MBTA 3A zoning. And speak for the residents. You were all voted in here by the residents, and I would ask you to represent the residents. And then, there's one more topic on this that I'm kind of perturbed about. I did speak to our town manager about. Our town planner is not a resident in this town, and he's been attending, and I have the documents on this, regular training on how to convince residents to approve this zoning. He's not a resident here. He is a non-resident, and he's going to come before us and try to tell us how we should approve this? We should be having a representative of a resident attending these trainings regularly, not a non-resident. And that needs to be addressed, and I would hope that our town manager has addressed that so that we can take a better look at it. I also have an email here from an engineering firm that has agreed to assist Carver in getting the MBTA 3A zoning written and passed. That's not appropriate whatsoever, and that needs to stop. The backdoor deals about this needs to stop, and we need to take a better look at what's going on with our town planner and these engineers that are contacting him. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up to the mic? Seeing no one come up, please state your name and address.
John Gasky, 162 Plymouth Street. How's everybody doing? Through you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to speak to the citizens real quick.
Sure.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to start by thanking you, everybody who voted for me, with your vote and your confidence. I hope to have a busy start to my legislative endeavor coming up here, get sworn in on the 1st of January, and hit the ground running. Last week, the Planning Board deliberated on the MBTA Communities Act zoning requirement. In my discussions with you while I was out campaigning, I found this to be a top topic of concern, and most were not in favor of being told that we have to create high-density housing. Tonight, we will likely be discussing this again, and I encourage everyone to attend and let your voice be heard. Now, at the Planning Board meeting downstairs, seven o'clock tonight. Additionally, I encourage you all to reach out to the Select Board through the Carver website, to each and every one of the members, and express your position in a polite and firm tone. Our Select Board was elected to represent us, the citizens. It cannot vote against the will of the people, and it is a citizen's duty to direct their vote for the majority. The only way that this can be done, and the right way to accomplish that, is by telling them how we feel. Call, email, write a letter, let your voice be heard. Also, Carver Concerned Citizens is actively working on the issue as well, and while some members of the Select Board do not appreciate the work they have done, they are effective, good people who care about this town. Contact them, and they will advocate for you. As your state representative, you can also email me directly at votejohngasky@gmail.com. That's V-O-T-E-J-O-H-N-G-A-S-K-E-Y at gmail.com. Or reach out through my Facebook page, John Gasky for State Representative. And remember, if you zone it, they will build. And then, to the Select Board, Chair. Good afternoon. I'm here today to reach out and to remind you guys that the legislative and budget deadlines are coming up. January 17th is the deadline for any type of filing, if you want to guarantee a hearing. With that being the date, if you could get it to me by the 10th, if nothing else, at least a rough draft, so I can put in a placeholder to make sure that we can get hearings and assign to committees for review. That includes budget line items, as well as any type of legislative matters that you have. With all that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys have a great night.
Thank you. Next item, we have applicants for the appointment to the Plymouth Airport Community Advisory Committee. Would any of the applicants like to come up and address the board? Please state your name and address.
Hello. My name is Robert Perry. I'm on 3 Ward Street, so I live right down the street from the airport. I've lived here for 32 years, and I am definitely pro-airport. I actually enjoy watching them fly over the house, especially when the old World War II bombers used to go over. Quite fascinating. But if you have any questions, let me know.
Great. Any questions on the board?
I have no questions.
Nope.
I'm sorry, I missed the part, you've lived here for 32 years?
Yep.
And then, you've watched bombers come over. There was something I missed.
Oh, so the World War II bombers, they used to come into the airport, and I'm pro-airport, and I did used to enjoy watching those fly over the house.
Yeah, there's something else, yeah.
Yeah, they're cool.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Is that all?
Thank you, sir.
Awesome. Have a great night.
Appreciate it.
I guess just one thing with Mr. Perry. It is my understanding that Carver Select would make a recommendation to the Plymouth Select Board, and the Plymouth Select Board would actually be appointing you, so if they contact you, please make sure you show up there and...
Yeah, definitely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. James, would you come up?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. James is my neighbor, so to avoid any appearance of conflict, I'm going to recuse myself from any conversations. You got it, Mr. James.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Ed James, 8 Harvard Street Way in Carver. Yeah, I've been Carver rep to the Airport Commission for the past over eight or nine years, I guess, here now, and attending all the, probably 90, 95% of the Commission meetings all the time, and so I'm active there. I'm also an active pilot there, out of the airport as well. Background in aviation is long. Private pilot's license in 1972, I think, commercial license in '74, and maintain my commercial pilot's license since then, and ran a fixed-based operation down at Love Field in Dallas for a few years down there. Prior to that, I was corporate pilot with IBM. And kind of laid low for many years after that, and now I'm picking up flying again and being active in the Airport Commission and things going on at the airport. So I also live very close. I'm under the pattern for Runway 624, and just like to contribute a little bit to this Commission here too, a committee, rather, and all. And kind of helping with the Airport Commission too, because I'm active with them as well.
Thank you much for volunteering. Any questions for Mr. James on the board? Seeing none, Mr. Gannon, are you looking for a vote to recommend from the board?
Yes, we're looking for a vote to recommend them to the Plymouth Board of Select.
Okay, we would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend Ed James to the Plymouth Airport Advisory Committee.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second, yeah.
We have a motion, a second. Any other questions, issues, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Do you need a roll call, or do you...
Oh, we need a... Sorry, Jim, do you have any questions? Nope, Jim, I can't hear you.
All from the line.
There you go.
All right.
Can you hear me now?
Can hear you now. Do you have any questions for Mr. James?
No. Well, thank him and Mr. Perry for both applying.
All right, so we have a motion, a second, roll call, vote.
Dan Ryan says aye.
John Carter says aye.
Sarah Hewn says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
4-0, congratulations.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for volunteering. All right, next person is the, anybody like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Robert Perry, to recommend an appointment for Mr. Robert Perry to the Plymouth Airport Community Advisory Committee? Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other questions, issues, or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor of appointing Mr. Perry to the Commission, please say aye with a roll call vote.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
John Carter says aye.
Sarah Hewn says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
5-0. Perry's there? Nope. Congratulations. All right, next item on the agenda, continue the hearing for the all-alcoholic, for all-alcoholic license, Three Sip Brewing Company LLC located at 145 Main Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Rob Pellegrini, representing the applicant. Excuse me, could you speak right into the mic? Sure. Thank you. Rob Pellegrini, representing the applicant. The last time we were here, there were some actually really helpful comments brought up. One was that you thought it would be a good idea to have a gate added for emergency egress. So you will see that, if you're looking at that plan I just handed out, right sort of on top of the cooler area, you can see there's been a gate added. While thinking about that, they also added a gate right at the entrance area where you would enter the backyard area. I guess it's on top of the no-parking area as shown on the plan. You can see that little sign, gate was added there. There was also a comment that the, because it's right on South Main Street, that we should have a 48-inch-high stockade fence that was also added. I think the reason for that was just we wanted to make sure that children couldn't accidentally run out of the area and get onto the street. And there was some concern about the distance from the fence to the street line, so the architect added that it's 14 feet just to the edge of the street. So we clarified that as well. I believe that was all of the comments, but if I missed one, I'm sure you'll let me know.
Any questions on the board? Silence?
Thank you. Just two small things. One, I think concrete pad, the word concrete is spelled wrong, unless that's a new word that I don't know.
Yes, it is.
Thought you might want to have that checked. And you said it's going to be a stockade fence, but it doesn't say stockade, it just says fence.
Okay. There's a sample example put up sort of in the upper right-hand corner of what it will be. If you just want to make that a requirement, that it's be exactly as shown on the plan, that would be fine.
Well, I just think if you're going to put a stockade fence in there, it should say that.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not arguing.
Okay.
All right, other questions on the board? I think this is still a continued, this is a continued open hearing, right?
Yeah.
Any other questions from the members here? Nope. All right. So I would like to make a motion to approve the all-alcohol license for Three Sipings Brewing Company LLC located at 145 South Main Street.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the all-alcoholic license for Three Sips Brewing Company LLC located at 145 South Main Street with the two corrections to the plans.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any other questions, issues, or concerns? Seeing none, take a motion to approve, roll call, vote. Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
John Carter says aye.
Sarah Hewn says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
5-0.
Really appreciate it, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I think you might as well hang on here. You have again, next item, for the application for the common victory license, the Three Sips Brewing Company LLC located at 145 South Main Street.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, and a second.
Second.
Any questions, issues, concerns, seeing none, roll call vote. Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
John Carter says aye.
Sarah Hewn says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
5-0. Thank you, gentlemen.
Just before I walk away, the correction that you would like, just send it in in the morning?
Okay. And sorry, one other thing, the tips procedure, you guys are filing for that, you're going through it?
Yes, that was completed. I have the...
Great. Thank you so much.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, now we have an approval for transfer of a brewery license, Brewery 44 to Montello Street, Unit 7C. Anybody here to represent this company? Good evening.
Good evening.
Say your name.
Michael King.
Mary King.
Please use the microphone so people at home can hear you.
Mary King.
Yeah. Michael King.
So you're here just for the transfer of the license to your name, or are you the new owner?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Nope.
Any questions?
Nope.
I'm glad it finally came through.
That's right.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, we would like to make a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any questions, issues, concerns, seeing none, roll call vote. Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
John Carter says aye.
Sarah Hewn says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
5-0.
And I'll make a motion to approve the common picture license also.
Second.
Motion, a second. Questions, issues, concerns, seeing none, roll call vote. Mr. Ryan?
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
John Carter says aye.
Sarah Hewn says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, one other thing, this group will also be looking for an entertainment license that will come to us at our next meeting. We're waiting for approval from Town Department, that's all.
Thank you.
Great, well, thank you very much.
All right, best of luck.
Thank you, folks. Good luck.
Thank you, good luck.
All right, Mr. Gannon, on this next item, I'm going to recuse myself.
Yes.
And I get, Mr. Hoffman, you take the lead on this?
Okay. Okay, so we want to amend the 2024-2025 Edoville license to add a contingency requiring a detailed police officer present each day for the sale of alcohol to patrons who are free to walk about the park.
The police chief is here to speak on this matter, and the representative from Edoville Railroad.
Brenda Johnson, 28 Pine Ridgeway.
I'm a police chief. So we, to remain consistent with how we enforce laws at Kingfisher's Fair and other outdoor venues, it's brought to my attention that we hadn't done this before. The fair, Edoville has cooperated with the Department, ordered details, but we thought it would be important to have it as an addendum to the license, so that's what we're asking for.
I'll make a motion to amend the 2024 and 2025 Edoville liquor licenses to add a contingency requiring a detail officer to be present each day for the sale of alcohol to patrons who are free to walk about the park.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, if I could...
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I wonder if we could amend that to make it at the discretion of the police chief. There are times when details are very difficult to fill. The chief may have actually a third officer on, he may be able to increase, you know, patrols in that area and...
Absolutely, it's amended.
And it's seconded. And seconded.
Okay, any other questions? Roll call vote.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewn says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, folks.
Go back.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hoffman. All right. Okay, 645... Approval of the financial management policies. Mr. Gannon, I'll let you lead us.
So, since the finance director is going to come back in here. So over the summer, we had a chance to work with staff and invited guests to a committee, a few old staff meetings, in working on the financial policies. We walked through them one at a time. The board did get a feel for it. We had the discussion about the split. I want to say that was November 19th, but again, we've been working on these over the summer. I might want to walk through these. I think I'll walk through them one at a time, if that's all right with the board, just to make sure we're clear on what we're looking at, and see if I can scroll down here. And this looks like the final version. I do know in your packet also, there is a redline version. So the very first one here, you know, it's the town is preparing a balanced budget with a 10-year forecast. We did push back and forth on this one a little bit. We talked about a five-year forecast. I believe at the Select Board meeting on the 19th, there was actually a five-year forecast presented to the board. We've had some discussion now with our rating agency, remember, we've got the AA bond rating back again this year. They're really looking for a 10-year forecast, and we amended it to include that 10-year forecast. Number two there, comprehensive budget narrative, including the detailed examination of trends of tax levy, new growth, local receipts, state aid, and other available funds. Again, we had the presentation at the November 19th Select Board meeting. You know, this is something we should be working on. Oh. Karen, I was just going over number two. I think this one is pretty straightforward. Again, we've already talked about it, something we're going to, you know, make sure we work on every single year. I know we had this discussion, I believe the majority of the board, if not the entire board here, always believes that we should start with the revenues. I think it's the right place for any town to start. Karen, you want to jump in on number three?
Karen, use that microphone if you don't mind.
So for policy number three, one of the areas that we're working on with the town is making sure that our operating budget is funded through revenue sources and that we're not using free cash to cover our operating budgets. And, you know, we're also looking at, you know, as we get free cash numbers and we have additional revenue, it might be one-time revenue, we're looking at putting that money into stabilization funds so that we can maintain balances and funds for the future for the town.
If I could with the board here, and I don't really carry it so much with the opera, but I know with CARES Act funding, quite a few towns got in trouble with that. You know, it really isn't a continued revenue source. They would do staff hirings with CARES Act funding, and then, you know, CARES Act funding ends, and here's the town looking at positions, either they have to cut the positions or look to fill those budgets, so I think that's a good policy to have.
And we also, just to add to that, through you, Mr. Chair, we also want to make sure that we have money available if there's an emergency, just as we, you know, went through, you know, what happened with COVID. I mean, who knows what can happen, you know, five years from now, 10 years from now, but to be able to have savings, you know, set aside for emergencies, I think it's going to be really beneficial for the town with this policy.
So should we stop and ask any questions on these new paragraphs?
Sure. Yes, you should. I'm sorry.
Through you, Mr. Chair, and I, for policy number three, I was just referring to A. I hadn't gone on to B, or any of the other ones.
B, C, D, E. There's a lot in there.
Through you, Mr. Chair, would you like me to continue? Does anybody have any questions?
I'm just looking at, we're saying what's in there now, but we're not saying what we took out. Do we need to clarify what we're taking out for the redlining?
I think we can read it lined out during the, on the thing there, so.
So go ahead.
We do have the redline version, too, if you would have looked at that.
So again, you were just referring to item A, right?
Yes, I was just referring to item A. I think that with our financial policies, and as you're looking at the red and you're looking at the blue ink, a lot of the changes... a lot of the changes that we made were based off of best practices and, you know, information that we're getting from Standards and Poor, who does our bond rating, and they're always looking at our financial policies, and as they look at the financial policies, they're asking themselves, is the town following them? Are they saying what they're supposed to be, are they doing what they're saying they should be doing? And so, as we were making these changes, we wanted to make sure that the policies were, um, consistent and that we were, um, writing them in a way that they could be understood, and there's no room for other interpretations. So as we met together as a group, we wanted to make sure that we all understood, um, what these policies meant, and so that we didn't have any misinterpretation. Um, going on to be, we wanted to make sure that as we're looking at our operating budget, we have a lot of capital projects that we're bringing on. We receive capital, um, projects through AWPer money, with, you know, we receive capital projects, million dollars worth of capital projects, and so the maintenance of those capital projects have to be funded in the operating budget. This year, when we had our kickoff meeting, you know, I mentioned to all of the departments, and we met with all the departments, just to ensure that if you have capital projects and you have operating expenses, your expenses in the operating budget should go up to cover maintaining these different capital projects. There could be systems in that they're not put into the capital article, because, you know, there's no way for us to maintain our capital assets when you have expenses, um, that should be funded in the operating budget. So we wanted to make sure that the expenses are separated into the proper fund. Um, another area for our capital projects, which is C, are, you know, for, you know, the services, that we have a full life cycle cost analysis prior to the budget approval. So with the capital projects, not only should we be listing what the capital project is, but we should have the, you know, the useful life of that capital project. That's why, you know, with our capital, um, our capital plan, you know, it's over multiple years, you know, five to ten years, because items and equipment, they have a useful life, and so if it's five years, is it ten years? We know that, okay, in five more years, we need to think about how are we gonna find the replacement of this particular equipment. So these are things that we instituted as we, um, you know, met with the capital committee and meeting with the departments with the new capital request that each department, um, was required to fill out this year, explaining, you know, useful life, sources of funds in terms of, um, how we'd be funding the project. Um, D, for one-time grants, we get a lot of grants, but we wanna make sure that these grants are not used, um, and covered if the grant, um, deceased, or where we don't receive the grant funding in future years, that those expenses are not, uh, absorbed through the operating budget. And so, those are one-time funds that'll be used strictly by the use in terms of what's been listed in the grant application from whatever agency we received it from. We make sure that, you know, if there are any grants that, uh, are, been offered to the town that have, that are being used to pay salaries, that we're meeting with the departments and going through, you know, what salaries are being covered through these grants, and we're just making sure that, you know, as the grants are being renewed each year, that if a portion of the grant isn't renewed, that we're not gonna be then moving that expense into the operating budget. We would have to look at, you know, how the services would change with that particular position, um, not being funded by the grant, but it's not, and that would have to go through the select board, um, for approval, because then that person would need to have an additional staff added to their, um, to the FTE, so that's something that's not a practice, with the grant ends in that position, or however, whatever we're funding where that ends as well. Um, E, this, this item just talks about free cash, and, you know, just a definition of free cash, it's unrestricted funds, and at the end of the fiscal year, the Department of Revenue will look at our balance sheet and additional money that we have left after looking at all of our revenue, looking at all of expenses, if there are any shortfalls in any of our funds, uh, whether it be the grant funds, or trust funds, or special reserve funds. Um, this Department of Revenue will certify our free cash, and that is used as what the state states that we have left, um, as available unrestricted funds that can be used for, you know, different, as a resource for the town as revenue. We, um, within the town of Carver, will be using free cash, um, to put into stabilization funds, as I mentioned before, um, saving money for the future and for different capital needs, but we're not using free cash to fund our operating budget. And so this is what that policy, um, discussed. Letter F, um, this talks about our tax agreements and our personal property and our, you know, the solar funds, we have solar farms, we have battery storage units, we have pilot, um, payment in lieu of tax money, and the money that comes in through these tax agreements, you know, we would like to utilize that money to help as a revenue source towards funding funds such as this school feasibility study, OPEB, our OPEB trust, we have a liability, you know, our OPEB trust, so we'd be using the funds, um, to put aside for that. We could put aside funds, you know, for capital, for debt services, healthcare reserve funds, stabilization funds, um, special education reserve funds, and these are just example of funds that we, we have some of them already set up. We can set up any one that we want, but, you know, at the end of the day, we're looking to reserve money for a rainy day and make sure that we have a strategic plan of how we may use those funds. Um, as we move forward, we're looking at capital, there are some capital projects that, you know, may, um, cost more than we actually can, you know, provide in one particular year. So putting a money aside for that particular project, or if there's a school that we wanna build, um, and putting money aside, whether it's a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand every year, over three or four or five or six years, we would then have the money to actually, um, to actually purchase that piece of equipment, or, um, move forward with, um, some type of construction project. So it's just a way of saving, um, making sure that we're utilizing the savings and not just allocating it into, um, you know, increasing, you know, the expenses within the budget.
Question, Chair.
Mr. Ryan?
So, it is a good practice if we have, you know, what we call, we've been calling one-time money, such as pilot funds coming in and putting it into reserve funds, however, if some of it's not really one-time, I mean, the pilot agreements and, and, um, will be renewed and things like that, is there, what's the policy gonna be that once we've funded some of these reserve funds and there's money left over, what's gonna be the policy with the excess potential funds, would those go into? Could they be used for operating if we needed to, or would they, we be doing something else with them?
Um, one thing that we mentioned to you, Mr. Chair, um, within these meetings, you know, we set these policies as a guide for us, and I think that, you know, any point in time, I mean, we could put money outside, and as we look at the rest of the policies, we should start looking at, you know, are we adhering to the percent that we need to have in these funds? Because if you decide to utilize any of these, um, reserve funds as a revenue source for a particular fiscal year, you wanna make sure replenishing it. So I think, you know, sometimes you may have these funds, and we may use those as revenue sources, especially if we're using something to, um, cover debt service payment for a particular year, or if we have, you know, a different equipment, then those additional funds that we come in would be replenishing what we took out.
Okay.
So if I hear correctly, meaning, let's just say, we've hit our targeted balances, um, we now have this extra money, we could use it as a stop, uh, stopgap measure, but then, conversely, if we use some of this money for a purchase and have to fund it, then we, the following, if we use it for one year, we did, we did a stopgap measure one year, but next year, we need it for our capital, it wouldn't be available for the operating budget. So it's not like a, a reoccurring fund that can be used in the operating budget, it's just a one-time stopgap measure if needed.
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's correct, and I think, you know, it also depends on, um, unforeseen circumstances. I mean, if, if something happened and we had a huge storm that, or if, you know, we had flooding that wiped out different areas, you know, then we would have to come together to look at what, what funds do we have set aside for emergency purposes? And so there could be a, a time where we would need to use those funds. And, you know, we also have liabilities, and when we have the OPEB liability, I don't know if the town administrator would like to add to this?
I, I think one of the things we, we do have to think about, and we have to look at in the future, is, is some of these, uh, reserve funds could actually meet the goal. You know, and I know we have years right now to go to build them, but, you know, the school feasibility study, we talked about that one a little bit, uh, the special ed reserve fund, you know, we might be able to fill those up in a, in a couple of years, so I think it'd be appropriate for us, as we should, you know, review these policies as we move forward to see if we wanna reallocate some of that funding. Again, I, I think we have years to go right now, but, you know, that's something we should always be cognizant of.
Sorry, anybody else?
I have a question about.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, Jim. Go ahead.
So, so Karen, the, the tax agreements that you're referring to, are these the pilots?
Yes.
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes.
So, so would this change the current pilot agreements that we, uh, I'm sorry, the pilot allocations that we have?
Um.
Over could, Jim, but.
Go ahead.
I know that's been a big discussion about what the pilot agreements were supposed to go to the third, the third, the third, is this kinda replacing that?
Um, through you, Mr. Chair, so the pilot agreements based off of, you know, um, meanings that we have, you know, any new pilot agreement that we have right now as of July of two thousand twenty-four, there was ninety-seven thousand. So as we look at our revenue source, we'll be subtracting the revenue that we would usually use, um, to fund the entire budget and using that money to put into these different accounts. The one, the one-third, one-third, they're, um, you're talking about reserve funds of how we allocated that money, and that would be up to the select board in terms of how much they wanna allocate into these different funds. So for instance, um, if you have the ninety-seven thousand dollars, you could say, okay, I'm gonna put a third of that into OPEB, I wanna put a third of that into the middle school, um, I remember there was a reserve fund for that, and a third into something else.
Well, I think what Jim's referring to, there was this solar money, one point three million dollars, that at one point George Samia put together a, an Amor table that would kinda bring some of that money back into capital. Over time, uh, I think it was a hundred thousand dollar number. So right now, I, I think what you're saying by reading this, is you're saying that one point three million dollars in the operating budget, it's never coming out. And as of July one, the ninety-seven thousand dollars, going forward on the next solar agreement, that's now going into this reserve fund. A million dollars or so, whatever we get from this battery goes into this fund. So any tax agreements now go into this fund, stay out of the operating budget until these goals are met?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that, that's correct, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you, um, what you asked.
If I could, Mr. Chair, that, that's it, Jim, so instead of pulling that money out of what's already in the operating budget, and, you know, having, you know, we had to cut staff or cut services, we really decided to, to draw a line in the sand. If, if you look at the very first sentence of F, it's new tax agreements as of July first, twenty twenty-four. So, any new pilot, uh, pilot programs coming on board, I know right now it's only ninety-seven thousand dollar solar, but, you know, next year would be the battery storage, and that would be a big number to go into these funds. So, goes back to the original intent, but again, we did kinda cooperate, if you will, the line in the sand, and, and not to cross it at this time.
Y'all set, Jim?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I just have a question on this debt line item, and I'm just a little concerned from a standpoint of, we have reoccurring debt already, which is about a million bucks, roughly, and that's fire engines and everything else. That's, now that's in the X amount of revenue that comes in, the debt's reduced, then you have your operating expenses and everything else. So that debt stays, it's, it's like a matching principle of revenue coming in, that debt goes against revenue coming in. That'll never get shifted over here into this debt line item, that you have up on the screen.
I'm looking at the screen up here, I'm.
Under capital, it says.
If I understand it correctly, it actually could, Mr. Chairman, so this would be a, a fund that we could pay our debt down with from this fund.
But then you're using the million dollars to pay for operating expenses.
Yes. That's the issue.
Correct, and that, and that's what that, right, so if you took that debt payment fro- from this fund as opposed from the general budget, that would free up more money in the general budget for.
But then why put the million dollars in the stabilization fund if you're gonna defeat the purpose by just moving the debt over with it?
That, that's a, that's a decision we have to make.
I, I just think that the debt should stay there, and if you decide at some point that you have to backfill it for whatever reason, I, I guess, I don't, I don't think the debt that we currently have, we get a new, new fire truck, we get a new cruiser, we get anything we have, we have debt for, that's on a debt schedule, that that stays in the bucket that's, uh, reduces our revenue.
And I would say the way.
This is above and beyond.
Yeah.
This is the extra thing that we have to do, that we can never do, because we have the funds coming in.
And, and I would agree that what you're suggesting, we, we could do, but the way it was really described to me was that, you know, we'd be looking at future items, um, you know, we're talking about the, the police, the old police fire station, uh, what we'd actually do with that building, whether or not we'd be doing some kind of capital project there, uh, and this, this debt stabilization fund would be to pay for future.
Above and beyond.
And that's, yeah, that's, but, you know, again, something we have to keep our eye on, because what you're talking about, we could actually do, so.
Yeah.
You know, it might defeat the purpose of it, so.
Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, I think originally, some of the purpose of the stabilization funds were like to avoid having to do a debt exclusion in town. So if you wanted to fund, say, we had to renovate a building, and, uh, the only way to do that would be to go for debt exclusion, well, the idea is to build up a stabilization fund, so even though you're gonna be paying principal and interest out of that fund, you don't have to do a debt exclusion or raise taxes, you can still do it within the tax levy, and.
Correct.
That'd be the purpose of using these one-time funds to build that up, to the point where we can then take on some of the maintenance or, or replacement of buildings in town that we're gonna eventually have to face.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I, I was just gonna mention, you know, and then, you know, with this debt, um, debt stabilization fund, it would also be a good opportunity if we have a purchase that's gonna be, we'll say we have a purchase now that we're not gonna be making payments for four or five years, it gives us an opportunity to still put money aside for that payment that we're gonna anticipate coming in the future.
Hundred percent agree. I, I'm saying this should be above and beyond what we're doing now, it shouldn't be to replace what we already have. Like, we run short on money to make a payment on the fire trucks, we're gonna use this money now.
I'm not clear on your question.
You have a million dollars in debt, right now, that's revolving, right? And it's for various equipment apparatuses, things like that, that this money, that the million dollars goes into this account, right? And we're saying it could be used for all these items, one of them's debt, that we should never be using that debt to pay for our reoccurring equipment purchases.
No, I understand what you're saying, um, so the current debt we have is in the operating budget.
Exactly.
And so that's covered through just our, our revenue, through our tax levy, local receipts. This fund would not be used to cover that debt service.
So how do we differ, how do we specify this in the policies? Do you, do you call this debt something different versus a revolving debt?
I'd have to, I'd have to think about that, you know, when we spoke to Hilltop, Hilltop also, you know, Hilltop Securities, um, you know, did, was, is reviewing our, you know, a ten-year capital plan and, you know, providing some on advice, and, you know, some of the things that they were thinking about was, you know, having a debt stabilization fund, where if you have a purchase that you're looking at four or five or six years, you know, debt is gonna be dropping off, to put money aside for that, so that, um, but you wouldn't be using that as a revenue source for, you know, five or six years. And that would allow the town not to have to go to issue debt. Well, when you say five or six years, interest rates, um, could be a lot higher. And so, when, it would be probably more beneficial if we had the money to then cover those payments already set aside now, and then you're earning interest, you know, on the funds that you have put aside, because all the money that we have in our stabilization funds, they're earning interest every day, so five or six years from now, you know, as we're moving forward to purchasing something that could then be a funding source.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
I think so, I just, am I getting it right from a standpoint of, there should be something in here that reserves this debt for the, for those special occasions, the extra capital that we need to do, the planning for, say, these large, large equipment purchases and things like that. But once we decide we're going to assume debt for an acquisition of something that's in the operating budget, we have, we have two buckets.
So, Mr. Chair, I think it's called the debt reserve account, so that's a, that's very different from the debt that's in the operating budget.
So let's check, call it the debt reserve.
Yes, you can, you can, these were just examples, so I think that, you know, whatever account you feel is gonna represent what you wanna do. I think that's the most important.
Because we have healthcare reserve fund, special ed reserve fund, you can just call it debt reserve fund, that makes it different.
All right. Without, Mr. Ryan?
I think we used to call it a capital building stabilization fund, I think, 'cause that's what we considered large purchases. If you're doing a building, you're talking multi-millions of dollars, and so I think in the past, they called it.
But that's under capital.
I think this.
Item number five.
I know.
Capital reserve.
But not, well, now it's getting confusing, because the capital mean like fire trucks and things like that in here. Um, if we wanted to buy a new fire truck, is this, is this a reserve fund for that kind of a thing? So maybe this is where it is getting a little confusing, because it's the purpose.
I think Ms. Prevell explained the difference between this debt reserve fund and the one in our budget. Maybe, can you just explain that one more time?
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chair. So for the debt, we're looking at principal and interest payments. Putting money aside for capital projects, and capital projects, like you're saying, it could be, it could be a building, it could be equipment, it could be a ladder, a truck ladder, it could be anything that falls under the category of capital, we're going to capital. Debt stabilization strictly has to do with principal and interest payments. And it allows the town not to have to issue debt.
Okay.
In the future, because we're putting money aside to cover the.
Well, you'd still do the borrow, you just use that fund to pay for it.
And, and yes, you'd still do the borrowing, but you'd have to really, it's, there's more to it than just saying, okay, I'm going to borrow mon, money. You have to really look at, you know, the 10-year plan, how debt's actually dropping off, what debt you want to take on, what are the interest rates. You know, there are going to come times where we will have, you know, free cash, we'll have available funds, where we just want to pay for it upfront, you know, as a capital outlay, you know, compared to making the debt service. But I think, you know, that, that exercise needs to be reviewed to see what's going to be most beneficial for the town in terms of saving and still being able to, you know, have these funds available.
So maybe look a different way. Right now, we've seemed to consistently have, for as long as I can remember, revolving debt of about a million bucks. Is that about right? So it was one of our policies to keep, I don't know, revolving debt associated with the operating budget at a million dollars. Is that one of our policies?
That's something you could put in your policies, but that.
I just don't want to see five years from now, see our revolving debt being half a million dollars, $200,000. But it's because it's all moved into this account. You know what I'm saying?
Well, these accounts are, we, these accounts are sources of revenue. So, you know, you have your expenses that are part of your operating budget, and you have your capital plan, you have your debt service, you know, your principal interest payments, and it's part of your operating budget. But this fund could be used to set aside. So pretty much what happens is it's a source of revenue. So we'll say if you have a truck, and you know that the truck is, we'll say, 2.5 million or 3 million dollars, and we don't want to issue debt, and we know that we're going to make the expense for that truck in five or six years. Instead of waiting five or six years and issuing authorization from town meeting and then making those principal and interest, principal and interest payments, what you could do is you could put aside money into this debt fund. And then in five or six years, if you still have to issue it, you could issue less than the amount of the truck will save, the truck will save, if the capital purchase is $3 million, and over five or six years, you've saved up a million, then you would only have to issue debt for $2 million, but.
I, I think you're right, you're on it right now from a standpoint of having some kind of, sorry, Mr. Kim.
He's coming, I got.
Mr. Chair, just one, can we, can we associate a date with the debt, like, kind of like we did with the pilot programs to move forward, July 1, 2024. You know, any debt occurred after July 1, 2024. I think, Mr. Chairman, that would address your issue of, you know, going back and paying the debt that's already on the books. This is really just future debt. I don't know if there's a way we designate the fund that way or not.
Well, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think that, let's just say our targeted revolving debt was a million dollars. And in your example, all of a sudden, we want to buy this big piece of equipment, whatever it is, and we, we don't have the money, but we have debt falling off over the next three or four years. We can stop putting money aside using this debt balance, right, to, to make payments until we have room under our million-dollar debt fund to move over the net balance, whatever, whatever cost for the asset, whatever we put aside in this fund, we're going to move it into our revolving fund debt that's in our operating budget.
Through you, through you, Mr. Chair, yes, that is one thing you could do. And then, as I mentioned before, you know, if we have debt which we don't have the money to cover a $3 million purchase or $4 million purchase, anything we can do to reduce the amount of principal and interest payments in the future, whether it's five or 10 years, we have a fund that we will be saving money up for that will cover reducing our debt that we're going to have to issue when we actually go to bond it. Because a lot of the projects, a lot of the capital projects, you know, it really depends on how much money you have, but a lot of the capital projects, you can issue a sort temporary, temporary money on, it's called a ban. And that ban, you know, you're paying interest on until you're able to actually finance the capital projects, and they usually allow you five years for that. But, you know, this money would be sitting aside that would then reduce the amount that you'd actually have to bond if you were to move forward with a project.
Mr. Ryan?
In the past, we were struggling to, to do the new fire station and the police station. So we, if we put one fund together where we say anything, anything can come out of it, we may end up back in the same problem where, you know, you're, you're fighting with, well, you might buy a fire truck versus renovating a building, a new building. I think the purpose of separating out the accounts is that you're going to build them up for a purpose, so you know that we will have future building needs. So we really should have a dedicated, probably reserve or stabilization fund just for the buildings themselves, because if we don't do that, then it's just going to compete again with everything else. So that's, that was the reason for separating that, whereas all the other capital, you know, for the vehicles and things like that, came out of a different bucket. So I think it's important to recognize that because we do have buildings we're going to have to take care of, and if funds are coming in, we should dedicate those into the, you know, the major buckets, I think, going forward.
I agree.
Through you, Mr. Chair, just, if I can add to that, and I was just thinking, as you were mentioning that, you know, as we start to provide a little bit more information in terms of what's going into these accounts, you know, if you have your capital fund and you want to use that to fund capital, let's say you have a million dollars saved up and there's a capital item for 500,000, you could, as the select board, request to use funding from the capital stabilization fund to purchase this one-time item. Or you, but the debt stabilization would be different. That debt stabilization is used only to cover principal and interest payments. So it would really depend on what type of financing you would want to use for your capital projects, but that would have to be, you know, just kind of decided.
Okay, but, but just looking at these, what you're saying, you're going to set up reserve funds for each one of these items on your list, right?
That's correct. And whatever ones that, I mean, these were examples. So as we, you know, as we meet with the budget, if there's other ones that people want, we can have them set up.
So I would just say, because this is one of the only ones that we kind of have a duplicate of debt, that's in the, in the, already in the operating budget versus what's here, maybe add a paragraph as to what this debt can be used for.
Clarify.
Okay.
I agree, I agree. Because we're trying to make this as transparent as possible and make sure that we don't have anything that can be interpreted the wrong ways. I agree with that.
Does appear in number four, we did not have any changes left on the board.
Mr. Chairman, just through you to the town administrator, Ms. Prevell, I just want to be clear, since there's no changes to number four, that we're not changing anything on the town's policy that we plan on maintaining a general stabilization fund of seven and a half percent. That stays the same, nothing, any of these policies that we're changing affects that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make one comment on four. We have policies here, you know, where we need to maintain a balance. So as we move forward, with FY26 and balancing the budget, we want to make sure that we are adhering to having a balance of that 7.5%, so that will be revealed. This was in regards to the capital and debt stabilization fund that we were talking about before, and utilizing the, the sources that was part of policy three ENF that we just discussed, and maintaining, you know, financial reserves to cover, you know, internal debt services and one-time capital projects, which we had just mentioned. We are looking to have 5% of our annual revenue funded in these different buckets, so that we'll have money in the future to cover, you know, these different expenses that we just discussed.
So are we saying we're taking the tax assessment, tax, tax agreements and moving that into those funds, and we're taking 5% of annual revenue and putting in the funds?
The way I read this is that we would like to maintain a reserve fund balance of 5% of the annual revenue.
It's a targeted balance, got it.
A targeted balance, yes. Any questions?
When you said that, at the end, our borrowing capital project should not exceed 10% of the town's general fund annual revenues. So that would, that would be $5 million?
Yes, we're not within, I mean, we're, we're fine within that limit, but yeah, 10% of our revenue source. So, I mean, our capital projects are around, you know, if you're looking at annually, we were maybe around like 2. something million dollars. So we fall within that. It's always good to have that within the policies because the bond rating agency is always looking at, you know, in terms of best practices, do they have too much debt? And so one of the things that they look at is, you know, if it's over, if you have debt over this amount, then that's kind of like a red flag to some of these agencies that, well, maybe they, you know, may not be able to continue making the payments, especially if unforeseen things come up that where you need to use the funding other than paying down your debt.
Okay. Questions from the board?
As I was going to say, number six looks more like a operational policy, but, you know, with the cost savings associated. Between myself and the school superintendent here, looking to make sure we're explaining opportunities to reduce duplication of services and providing the more efficient, effective services to residents and to reduce expenditures. So I think it is something we've always looked at, and we talked about a little bit of that with the split, whether or not we'd be, you know, duplicating services, doing additional accounting for both sides. So this is something we're always looking to do right now. I know O and M is always trying ways to help both the town and the school as we move forward. So just something that's always on the radar. A good policy to have, I would say.
So I just have a quick question on that. So what's crossed out, that's what we're eliminating from the current policy?
Correct.
Correct.
And I believe if, if I could, I believe that goes back to when the, the school and the town had more mixed departments, if you will. I believe IT and then O and M, we split those off. So we thought eliminating that right now is appropriate. Some things just don't work out, is what it comes down to, especially on the IT side, I believe. It gets a little bit difficult.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Want to move on to number seven?
Sure.
I'm happy, happy to do it. I know this is a, this is a point of contention. I believe we had three meetings on this one as staff, and again, with our invited guests to come up with a split, we did have a vote from the select board on the split at our November 19 meeting. You know, this is something, the school superintendent is here, the finance director here is from the school also. If you have any questions on it, you know, I know, I know we discussed this at length, but we did come up with a split that we, both the town and the school can work with their budget, within their budgets.
Through you, Mr. Chair, could I just make one comment? So for this, will the revenue should be allocated after, and I know that we had gone back and forth as fixed liabilities. These are some of the benefits that we have identified compared to shared cost. I mean, it's, I think that fixed liabilities is easier for people to understand, especially if there are new people coming into the town that aren't familiar with some of the prior year terms.
Any questions? I think to turn number eight back over to the finance director for OPEB.
And so for this, it's really important that we continue one of the areas, and as I was talking with S and P, looking at a bond rating, they wanted to know, are you funding your OPEB liability? We have a liability of 40, 1.5 million dollars. And what the agencies are looking for is they're looking for consistency in funding this. And that's one thing that they thought the town was doing well of, and they were happy to see that we funded $200,000 over the last couple of years. So I think that, you know, this, just stating that we're aware of this liability and that each fiscal year, as we, you know, have, you know, our free cash, and we have the different revenue sources, that we need to continue putting money into this fund.
Okay, Jim?
Sorry, can I, can I go back to number seven for a quick second? So is the, is the split actually going down for the school and up for the town?
No, the split is the same as last year.
Okay, I just didn't know what the red line put at. So it'll be 68.3 versus 31.7?
Oh, you know, I'm sorry, in the, it's 68.4 and a 31.6 is a mistake in the red line version. But the, the numbers you see also too there, the, the crossed out, the 69.69 was the prior year split.
Mr. Chair, through, through you, those are, that's the split that we voted at a previous meeting.
Correct.
Those are the same numbers.
Yes. Yeah, the majority of the board voted on that, so.
Yeah. Moving on to nine, this is kind of housekeeping to make sure that as we close out the fiscal year, if we have any articles that have existing balances that they're reviewed by the town administrator, the finance director, to make sure that we close those out to allow for the department of revenue to allocate those to free cash and give the select board, you know, a final number of what we have each year to use towards other projects.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, the finance director's looking at the, the final version with number nine. If you look at the revised version, number nine, we, we decided to delete number nine. We thought it was an unattainable, unattainable goal, quite honestly.
Yeah.
You know, so we just pulled it out of there, and then, like I say, the finance director just described the new number nine.
Yeah, I kind of like the old number nine, just as a target, even though it was probably a wish list to reach. But what's the new number nine, or is that?
So that's just the number 10.
Yes, the old 10 became the new nine.
Closing out priorities, which is just, again, good practice.
Yep, I agree.
Mr. Chair, through you, I wonder if, I noticed we have representatives of the school here. I wonder if we could just ask if they have anything to add to our discussions?
Sure.
Sure.
Come on up.
It's going to be a very short answer. Uh, no.
There you go.
No, of course, you give me the chance to be at the mic, I'll speak a little more than no. You know, so we had that financial working group to work throughout the summer. I think this is a fair, fair representation of the consensus that that group came to, and the school's in support of that, in terms of all the policies.
Thank you.
If I could, Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank the, the school staff for coming forward in this meeting. Not only did they attend all these night meetings that we had, we also had meetings behind the scenes to work on some of the calculations, just, you know, staff to staff. And we really appreciate that effort. It was collaborative effort, and I thought it was a very good working relationship.
Yeah, I would, I would support that as well. It's been great to work with Glenn and Karen and Ron on this.
Thank you.
Beyond the, beyond the group, beyond the financial working committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Do you need a motion? Are you going to make an amendment to it first?
I know, I know, we did talk about.
I know we talked about some minor changes.
Well, I think we should look at the debt language and find out what that, what's going to happen.
And then do a, take a final vote after that.
Okay. So we'll bring it back to you at the next meeting?
Bring it back for a final vote.
Okay.
Well, I wonder how, what if we were to take a vote on all the, all the policies except, except 3F? That's the one, that's the only one we have an issue with, right?
Sure.
So I would make a motion that we approve the financial policies as amended, with the exception of 3F.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions, issues or concerns? Hearing none. I guess this would be a roll call vote.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
John Carter says no.
Sarah Yuan says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Okay, there you go. Okay, there you go. All right. Uh, that's it for the financial policies. Uh, next item on the agenda.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
She's coming back.
I think she'll be back pretty soon.
Okay.
Uh, let's see where are you? North Carver Water District Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I'd like the board to know, I, I did ask the chair to put this, uh, topic on the, on the agenda. Uh, I think we need to have a discussion about the North Carver Water District and, and by the future of the North Carver Water District. I do want the board to know, um, I know as, as the deadline comes up, uh, December 27th, I do plan to bring in an article forward that would dissolve the North Carver Water District. I think it's time for us to have that discussion, to have a, uh, you know, a real discussion about it. Um, you know, I've been in Carver just over six months now. I've been working with the North Carver Water Commissioners, attending the majority of their meetings. I think that they're, they're working really hard there. They're, they're really trying hard. Uh, I think it takes a lot of time and effort. I'll tell you, I'm worried about the sustainability of it, and I, I know they're not complaining about it, but I will tell you, you know, uh, Mike Palmieri, when I came on board, uh, told me one of the reasons why he was stepping away was the number of hours he was putting into the North Carver Water District as a retiree. I believe he told me he was working 20 to 25 hours a week. Um, you know, that, that's quite a lot to ask for a volunteer. I, I also think, um, that, you know, in years past, from what I can gather, the North Carver Water District was more like a quasi-town agency. We stepped in to help them, I, I would say a lot, quite a bit as a matter of fact. I, and I know the new chair looks at it as a district. He's absolutely right. Legally, it is a district. It is separate from the town. He's trying to run it separately from the town. I think it's very difficult to do. You know, um, we have staff, we have resources, we can step up, we can help them, um, almost immediately. You know, I know one of the things they're trying to do right now is to, to bring an engineer on board, um, to do an assessment of the facility. Well, the town has an engineer firm on retainer. We could bring them in immediately, could have that assessment done. Uh, I, again, I think these are the kinds of things that we could be doing as a town, um, to move that forward a little bit quicker than what they can do right now. You know, I think that, um, it just, it's difficult for them to do it right now. They don't have any staff. I know they retained an attorney to help them write some of these RFPs, uh, but, you know, staff in the town could, could be working on that. Even with their, uh, their, their attorney, um, you know, it, it's very difficult to, to write some of these RFPs, to be cognizant of the, um, the procurement laws. Uh, when the RFP was done, we brought it in-house. I can tell you right now, our procurement staff helped them rewrite it and made sure it was appropriate to go out onto the street. Um, so there's a lot of things there I think we could, we could do. Um, I, I also think, you know, the, the town puts a substantial amount of money into it. I think the town is going to continue to put a substantial amount of money into it, uh, because they're just really on enough customers. And we need to be able to build up that customer base. Uh, I think we ought to be looking right now to, um, to work with, you know, with Middleborough, to continue that water service from Middleborough. I think they're also trying to do that. I think Middleborough is interested in, in signing a long-term agreement to supply water to us. Uh, I think that as we do that, you know, I think that town could help cut down on the cost of that as opposed to having to hire consultants to be able to work with the town and Middleborough as we move forward. I just think that's one of the things that we'd be able to work on, um, with them and to, to, to bring it forward. Um, again, to have that engineering study done, to find out where we're going in the future. Um, I, you know, I, I don't know right now where the facility is going. I don't know if it's going to cost us $50,000, $500,000, or $5 million, you know? I think that's an answer that the town people need to know. Uh, I do also think, um, that, you know, the, the customers there, they are residents of the town of Carver, and I, I think they've come here in front of the board. They're frustrated with some of the answers they, they're not receiving. Um, they're looking for answers. And I think, you know, if, if it is a town department, you know, I know I was at a North Carver Water District and they said, you know, who's responsible for this? And really, there was no one they could say, there's responsible for. Well, you know, because a town department and a resident comes to you and asks who's responsible, the town administrator is responsible, right? And then the town administrator, whoever that department has in charge of that, you know, I have to bring that down to the department head level. You know, we have to make sure we're correcting, and that, that's my job, right? And that's the, you know, for the select board to know exactly who to identify and, and how to address these issues. Um, so I, I think, you know, that's the last thing I'd leave you with. Again, I just want to make the board aware, I am going to bring an article forward. We can have the debate of the article a little, you know, whether it goes in the warrant or not, that's a debate we can have in another day, but I think it's time that we take a hard look at it.
Yeah.
And we, if it was to, to occur, we're still facing the same issues that North Carver Water District.
Correct, the issues really don't, I, I do see it though as a, as a monetary issue, you know, I, I believe as towns staff, whatever they're bringing a consultant on to do, we can do cheaper. And well, you know, that's one thing we should always be looking for. If there's expertise, if we have to hire the engineering firm to do that, that's expertise we don't have, so we know we need to do that. But, you know, really, if we're cutting the grass and maybe doing some of the electrical work, you know, if those are things we can be doing in-house, those are the kinds of things we should be doing in-house, uh, trying to cut down on the, the, again, the amount of money that's going there. You know, with that said, as far as the town is still contributing to, uh, the debt service every single year, right? I want to say it's $231,000. It's off memory. I can't, none of them, I'm, I'm memorized. But still, a, a, a large ask, you know, um, and that's something the town is going to have to contribute to. I think we need to, you know, make sure we were working with them, making sure we're collecting the proper bills, make sure that the meters are done right, make sure we can read the meters correctly, you know, all these things. And again, um, I, I think with a lot of things, you have to make sure somebody's accountable. I think it's good for town staff to be accountable to that, uh, and accountable to the residents, so.
And if I could just, one of the things that we discussed as a board here, when the North Carver Water District issues first came to our, our attention, is the fact that there really was no notification system when there was a problem with the water. And, and, you know, residents didn't get notified. And, and I think that's one of the things the town can really do that, the North Carver Water District, they don't have a staff and
Correct.
they, they can't really do that. But we owe a duty to, to folks up there, you know? If we know that the water is going to be out for three hours on Thursday morning to flush the system, then we need to let them know ahead of time. So they know that. And, and it, it became apparent that they weren't notified of those things, so.
Yeah, I, I still think if, if there's an emergency, it's still town staff that's showing up. If a per-
That's right.
Pipe bursts in the middle of the night, you're not going to get a consultant out there to fix it, you know, you're going to be relying on town staff. They're still going to be going out there. And, and they should be, you know, again, these are town residents we're trying to take care of, and they, you should be trying to help them, you know? And I think, I just think if we control that, you know, the more control we have over it, the better, I think the better job we can do of it.
Mr. Chair, um,
Ms. Ewan's.
And you say, uh, Middleborough is willing to enter into a more long-term agreement with us?
There are discussions about more of a long-term agreement. Right now, they're under an emergency order to supply water with DEP. Um, again, they're looking to make sure that, and, and again, if the North Carver Water District gets up and running or if the facility gets up and running again, you know, we can shut off the valve from Middleborough. But if we run into problems again, they'd have that agreement in place, they'd just be able to go right back out and turn on the valve again.
So if we do shut down the North Carver Water District, it's not necessarily permanent, but it would have to be, to bring it back, it would have to be in a better situation.
Correct.
Shall we say?
Right, and we really need to start with that engineering study to have somebody, an expert, tell us what's wrong with it and what we need to do to bring it up to speed.
But even if, maybe I'm, even if we dissolved the district, that doesn't dissolve the water.
Correct.
That just dissolves the district. And, and now the, the water would still flow through the pipes, it's just that it wouldn't be, wouldn't be the district running those.
In theory, it's, it's the management of the system is all it is. The dissolve, the dissolving of the North Carver Water District is just the dissolving of the management, the management structure, if you will.
And it's not a reflection of the current members of the North Carver Water District. They've been doing a hell of a job trying to get their hands around it.
I want to echo.
It's just too much.
Correct, I want to echo that. I know, I go to the meetings, I mean, they're going there after hours, they go in there on Saturdays, they're putting in their own time. You know, I, I, I question the sustainability of it. I really do.
I, I just don't remember what the whole thought process was. I think it was geared towards commercial development. I think we did have one full-time person there when it opened up, but then somehow we went to, maybe the idea was it would gather all this commercial revenue and would have a budget. And then you'd be able to have a paid water commissioner with a little bit of staff.
That was the whole idea.
Yeah.
Didn't work out.
Yeah, that's one of the things, I, I don't know where the, the, the break-even point is for the number of customers we need. Uh, it'd be a financial analysis we'd have to run, um, but I can tell you the 131 customers, it's, it isn't right now. We're not bringing enough revenue to run the plant. We're, we're not, that's the bottom line.
And, and just for my clarification, if this was to go, first off, the board voted to do this, and then if town meeting voted to approve that, then it has to go to the state legislature. So this could be a year away if, if this decision was ever made.
Correct, it should, it could still be a year away.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think in the, we've been trying to provide reliable, clean water to the residents of North Carver. It just seems like we're struggling to get there. And if this could help us to move faster, you know, I think that's what we need to come up with a plan. I've been waiting to see some kind of a plan and evaluation. It just seems like it's been taking a long, long time here to get to that point. And as you said, we, you know, we have a solution, a temporary solution now, but I think we still need to drive. So you think town resources, if they were available, could help to move this along quicker and help hopefully resolve the issue?
For example, so.
Yeah, I, I think town resources could move along quicker and, and at a better cost. Honestly, a better cost to the residents and a better cost to the taxpayers because the taxpayers are subsidizing. And we owe it to them.
So I, I would, I would ask that we probably would need a good presentation to be prepared for town meeting, you know, that at least goes through the pros and cons. You know, if we do it this way, this is going to be the cost and this is, you know, and if we, if the town is able to take it over, then here's how it would work. You know, maybe explain to people how we would do this, you know, what would change and, and what's, you know, what's the benefit to the residents?
There could be two visions going to town meeting. One, what the North Carver Water District plan is and what ours is, and town meeting has to decide.
Right. And it's, it's up to town meeting. So we just have to present, you know, this is, this is the alternatives, this is the scenario, and, uh, and let the town decide.
Mr. Chairman, through you, Mr. Gannon, is the meter pit completed?
Yes, the meter pit is complete, yes.
It, it's 100% done?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Jim, do you have any comments to make? Can't hear you, Jim.
You're on mute, Jim.
Can you hear me okay? So the, um, if this, because this gets presented to be put on the warrant, that, there will be a public hearing for that? Or that'll be at a public meeting?
It would be at a select board meeting, yes. They're approving a little warrant. And as we go through the articles, the select board could vote, you know, their, our recommendation on the article also. So there'll be multiple opportunities to discuss it.
Okay, that, I just want to make sure, because I know that's been a, a question brought up on social media and things like that, that this, this isn't just a, going to get stuck on there. We are going to talk about this and there will be ample opportunity for people to express their opinion.
And Jim, I would say, I think it'd be great if we could hear directly from the residents who are actually on the water system. I've heard a lot of anecdotal, uh, discussions that people are very happy with the Middleborough water, the Middleborough water system right now. Um, again, I think it'd be good if we did have public meetings and some of those folks came forward. It'd be good to hear from them directly.
No, I agree on this one. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's really all I have.
All right, next item is the American Rescue Plan Opera Update.
So in prior updates, we would look at the balances from Plymouth County, federal. Now that we are kind of reaching our deadline point, we're looking at a new update, and that is the project, any project that's outstanding, and what is the update on that project? So although our water projects were advanced payment, there's, they're still outstanding projects. So for Plymouth County projects, we have the Cover Middle High School Mechanical System for Better Air Quality. That project has begun. All of the, uh, parts have been delivered and that invoice has been processed. And the labor on that, uh, can only be done when school is closed, so that will happen over the holiday break. They're closed for two weeks, and then February vacation, they're anticipated to complete the project. The municipal well corrosion project has started. We've got an invoice on that. That started, uh, last week, and it is anticipated to be completed in January. Decommissioning of 22 private wells. This was something I, I don't want to say mandate, but I think it was, uh, suggested by the DEP or encouraged by the DEP that it happened. So you guys approved the project. Uh, the Board of Health, uh, started with any residents that offered out, yes, go ahead and decommission my well. There are a few residents that, um, do not want their well decommissioned for one reason or another. Um, so the Board of, the health agent is working with the DEP to see what steps to take next on to get those residents' wells decommissioned. The municipal well emergency repair generator. The generator finally has been delivered to the vendor. We were waiting for the part to be delivered for quite some time. And now that the generator is at the vendor, we are, it went to the installation department for their request for the installation date. So now they are just waiting for a date to be scheduled for installation. So that should move along. So that is it for Plymouth County projects. For federal projects, uh, we have the balance of the money for the, uh, Cover Middle High School air quality. If you remember, um, originally Plymouth County asked us to go about 10% over on our projects, which we did, then they asked us to zero them out. So we moved that amount over to federal funds. We have the Council on Aging Deck. Um, that was supposed to start a few weeks ago. And it had to get marked out by DigSafe, and now the contractor is going back and forth with the building commissioner to make sure, um, everything is in place that needs to be in place before the work commences. So that should start within the next week or so, and then it will just continue weather permitting. The generator for Town Hall, um, that contract was just sent out for signature last week, so we're waiting to get that back. Same thing, uh, these last few projects you, uh, approved at your last meeting. And that's the fire department UTV, the electric vehicle for inspections, and the portable radios. The departments have been working hard to get contracts signed and in, so federal guidelines require that there's a contract invoice or purchase order in place by December 31st. So those, that has happened for those three projects. Uh, and then the money just has to be spent by December 31st, 2025. And then the other item that is outstanding is the police new hires. So obviously that delay happened because they had to wait to hire the new people. Those two officers are now, um, starting, I believe, this week. I know they went through all of their pre-hire requisites. Uh, so they're starting the next week or two, so that money should get spent down through payroll. And that is the ARPA update. Do you guys have any questions?
Questions? So are we saying that the federal money is now zero with this, with this spending? Spent it all?
Uh, so we did not spend it all. There is a balance of $389.69. However, keep in mind, you approved the deck for $90,000. So, um, with any type of additions or changes, change orders to the deck, we will easily go over the amount of the contract. Also with this money, it is possible that the amounts of these fluctuations, so what happened was amounts of these contracts fluctuate up and down. They could get a quote, then maybe the specs change and the amounts change. I think that happened with the election drop box. I think the original, it was originally approved for 4,500. They came back and said, hey, we're going to give you a discount. So that did happen with a few projects. And I think for a few projects, for example, the municipal well booster pump, we incurred a freight charge of 89, 81 that was unforeseen. So we added that in. So, um, we are anticipating, if a charge needs to be added in, we will have that buffer to do that.
Okay. Any questions on the board? Jim, you all set?
All set, thank you.
Okay, thank you for the update. Next item, town administrator updates.
Sure, I'd like to start with, uh, budget updates, just so the board is aware. So, you know, we did have our revenue projections, uh, for the fiscal year '26 budget. And we're set with that. Uh, we've also gone through our, um, budgets with each individual department head. Uh, if you will, it, it's more of the wishlist right now, that what they're looking for. Um, you know, as we get into the preliminary numbers, you know, we'll, we'll, we will be cutting back on some of these requests that have come forward. Um, so that has to happen right now. Also had a meeting with the finance committee, uh, told them about when the budget will be coming to them. Uh, they're gearing up for, uh, January to, to move that forward. As we discussed, um, you know, we're going to have a, a substantial balanced budget by January 31st. That was our target date. Uh, we've also had a chance to talk it over with the capital committee. Uh, again, had the request from the department heads for all the capital projects, um, I would say exceeding the budget we're going to have, even though we do not have our free cash number yet. So, um, that'll be something else we'll need to work, uh, work through as we, uh, So that'll be something else we'll need to work, work through as we refine those numbers. So still, still looking for that target date of January 31st for the budget to be a balanced budget and substantially complete. And we're still working towards that.
Any questions from the board? I just got some follow-up questions. I'm trying to get, understand where, really we're at right now. We, we had the revenue projections.
Correct.
The majority of the board voted on a split. So you've got that.
Yes.
So she knows exactly how much money is coming from the town side. And now, what will the final product be going out to the finance committee? Is it a book? Is it a file? Is it a PDF? What do they, many, many years ago, we used to get a binder that was very detailed with department expenses, payroll information, capital. It was a nice booklet that we'd get.
Yeah.
What's the product?
Ultimately, the final project will be the budget book. I know right now, you know, as it's, as we're working through it right now, there'll be iterations of it. I think we talked about this last year. Was there a draft G or F? I can't recall. One of these drafts actually got lost in transition. So there are many iterations that do move forward. So we'll have many iterations, again, on this one, as we, you know, as we look to cut, we'll be making, you know, from a wish list, we're going to be looking to make cuts. So I want to make that clear, you know, above and beyond what's existing today. But the final will be a budget book for the, for the finance committee and also for the select board.
So what I'm trying to get at too is that the finance committee and capital lay up volunteers. And, and I'm starting to get, I know we slipped, the dates have slipped in, but we're now looking at January because even if the budget book is done this week, then you've got the Christmas week, nobody's around.
Correct.
You've got the New Year's.
Yes.
So you're really talking the first week of January. So that means both finance committee and capital, if they get the book on the first week of January, they only have four weeks to get, have their meetings and meet with everyone. And that's only if you guys give them a balanced budget book.
Correct.
I'm assuming you might still have some challenges on the first week of January trying to find some gaps.
I, I will have a further discussion with the finance committee chair to see how refined he wants me to bring it to them. If he tells me he wants a balanced budget, I will bring him a balanced budget. But we had a meeting with him. They know it's coming in January. They are getting ready for it. And the same with the, the capital. I think capital is actually a little bit more difficult because we really don't have that revenue projection. We don't have a free cash number yet from the state. That really determines what you can do for capital. We can start looking at the wish list, you know, but.
And, and when do we think she's going to, we're going to have the free cash number?
Uh-huh. The free cash number may not be coming until February.
Right. I guess we'll have a separate discussion on that.
Yeah, that is.
Could the capital be somehow prioritized? Like, where like top, middle, low? That way if you...
I think you can. Correct.
That way if you get a number, you draw the line and say, okay, everything above here is going to be funded and anything below is not?
Correct. I, I think you could look at it with, you know, let's go in with a million dollars and what's, what's above a million dollars and what's below a million dollars. And then, you know, I can, you can have a priority list. There's no reason why you can't.
Okay. And the second question is, will we get a draft budget at any point in time? What, is there a date by which we can at least start to look at the numbers?
There should be. We, I don't have my schedule right in front of me. We should be getting a draft budget in January though.
So the first, first draft we'll see in January?
Yeah.
So you're targeting the finance committee gets their book the first week of January. We'll be getting the book too. So what we're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
Okay. On to the North Carver Water District. Probably gave you the, the biggest update. I did not attend their last meeting. I know they have a meeting tomorrow night. I do plan on attending, having those discussions with them. As far as the town administrator goals, again, going through our goals, number one is the ARPA funds. I'd like to commend Elaine and the staff here for really working that. I think out of $3 million, there's $350 left over right now. That's pretty good budgeting right now to me. The North Carver Water District, again, we'll continue to have that discussion, continue to assist them any way we can. But bringing an article forward, we just had a discussion about the budget, the good selection, decision-making by providing thorough and accurate information. You know, that is always a challenge for us. The meetings are very dynamic. Succession planning, having those discussions with the department heads. Begin those with the budget discussions with the department heads, going to follow that up with individual meetings with the department heads, just talk about succession planning. Make sure they all have some type of plan there. Oh, and then the newsletter, again, the newsletter I think has been very successful, I'll say. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Well, the topics anticipated, so I guess anybody make, like to make a motion to approve the minutes of November 19th, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All who's in favor, roll call vote.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
John Carter says aye.
Sarah Hewen says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Select board announcements. Mr. Ryan?
Just wish everyone a happy, safe holidays. We won't be back in session until after the first of the year. So, you know, happy holidays to everybody.
Mr. Townsend?
Thank you. I just want to congratulate the town hall staff on yesterday's Carver tree lighting. I thought it went very well for our, our first time. So congratulations to everyone involved. I also want to wish everyone a great holiday season. And I just really want to acknowledge the Carver Police Union and Shane Gives Thanks. I think they, they've worked really hard through this holiday season to help some families out there that may have some challenges. So thanks, thanks to them. That's all I have.
Mr. Hoffman?
I also want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, and a Happy and Healthy New Year.
Thank you. Ms. Hewens?
Yes, I, I too want to wish everyone happy, good, safe holidays, but have fun too. And please don't forget Shane Gives Thanks Food Pantry. This is for anyone who is in need, and in particular, Carver's veterans.
Thank you, Ms. Hewens. I just want to echo Mr. Townsend's comments that yesterday's event was great. Appreciate the hot chocolate and the police unions. Also wanted to, you know, thank town staff, everything they did. And I know the guys went up, that tree up was probably something of a challenge. Also want to thank the Buzzes Bay Coalition for donating that tree. That was great on their behalf. Couple of things, fun things people might want to know about, the Frosty Road Runner Race, 10 and a half mile, 3.1 mile walk, Saturday, January 25th, to benefit the Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School. It starts off at the Old Colony, 476 North Avenue, Rochester, Mass. So if you feel like running and it's cold outside, feel free. The other item at the Carver Public Library, December 26th to January 4th, they're having a Jurassic Park event. All kinds of things for the kids to do. So you might want to think about taking, taking the family over there as well. That's all I got.
All right. Anybody make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call vote.
Dan Ryan says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
John Carter says aye.
Sarah Hewen says aye, but we should let people know our next meeting's January 7th, 2025.
Do we have any minutes to approve tonight?
We already did.
We did.
We approved them, Jim.
Okay. Just want to double check that. Jim Hoffman said that.
All right. Thank you, everyone, and good night.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.